So.
Give me just a second here to mute folks and then I will hand it over to you. Okay, I think we're ready to go.
Thank you. Well, the meeting of planning and zoning commission for Wednesday, June 4th, 2025, please come to order. The this evening's meeting will be a virtual meeting. This meeting or procedure will be as follows. When you first enter the Zoom meeting, you will be in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Please be aware that your camera, if you have one, and your microphone may be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time so that you can be seen by others when and if you choose to. In order to run an efficient and orderly meeting in this virtual environment, unless stated otherwise by the meeting chairman during the meeting, the meeting host may keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by the commission members, even if you are muted and/or your camera is not on. There will be an opportunity for public comment during public hearings, at which time the public participants will be unmuted. During the public hearing, applicant will be invited to present the application, explain to the commission and others present what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on the screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda have been.
I'm muting people as they come in, sorry.
In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda have been available through the public meeting calendar page on the town website, www.gilfordct.gov, and also through a direct link on the planning and zoning page. Comments of town agencies will be discussed as applicable to the application. There will be clarifying questions from the commissioners and the town planner will direct our attention to any additional items pertinent to the application. After all commissioner questions are exhausted, those who wish to speak in support or in opposition to the application will be asked to come forward, state their name and address for the record and make a statement. The applicant will then have an opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearing and the regular meeting during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as to the decision of this commission and has a right to appeal to Supreme Court if. Decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the planning and zoning department at (203) 453-8039 or by emailing planning.zoning@gilfordct.gov after 9:00 AM. All actions taken on applications tonight by the commission will be by roll call. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves to the record before speaking. Seated this evening are the following members. Will please identify themselves. Roger Joyce.
Sure.
Bill Freeman.
Here.
Scott Edmund.
Well.
And I think I think we're having an alternate join us tonight, Anne.
Um, Bob is here and Larry's here. You can see them both. Larry, I apologize. I don't know if you're an alternate or not.
I'm an alternate.
Yep, so you can see both.
I think Larry was seated last meeting. Is that correct?
You have enough. You could see them both.
See both.
Okay, let's see both Bob and Larry. That's fine. We'll get their feedback on some of the items. So I will entertain a motion to open the public meeting.
They'll move.
Second.
Okay, Roger.
Yes.
Uh, Bill.
Yes.
Bob. You say yes, Bob?
We can't hear you.
Yeah.
I saw a thumbs up.
He said yes. He's working on it.
Scott.
Yes.
And Larry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, a few housekeeping items before we get into the public hearings, if I may.
Uh, you may. I think this is a table setting.
Yes, table setting. The majority of our public hearing items will not be heard tonight for various reasons. I will go through them very quickly to tell you why. Seventeen Benton's Knoll will need to be tabled because they didn't notice their application. The two, first two 1940 Boston Post Road special permit applications were continued from last time, and I believe we will continue those to our next meeting in July. Nineteen, the other, the new special permit for excavation, filling and grading cannot be opened because it was not noticed properly. The text amendment will continue on the table because we are waiting for SCROG for their letter. So the only public hearing we can open tonight is 45 Stonehouse Lane. So I will ask you to make an action to table or continue everything else. But I just want to, for the record, reiterate where we are on the schedule for the overall Guilford Village West projects, just so that we all know what the timetable is. So there are three special permits and one site plan review application for that project. Two of the special permits and the site plan application were submitted in January. Their receipts are for February 5th. The applicant has already consented to additional time to the July 2nd meeting for the overall application. At that point, they will have used up the majority of their applicant days, the 65 days that they can consent to additional time. They would have seven days remaining. The clock is set that we do not know when inland wetlands will be making their decision. There is an allowance for an additional 35 days by the commission to make a decision after inland wetlands has approved their project. We do not, the overall applications, regardless of inland wetlands, and again, I can't ascertain when that will happen. We, it looks like we're at maximum days somewhere around the September meeting, but that really depends on when inland wetlands makes their decision. So.
Which we would expect to occur, we would hope to expect, we would hope to occur on their June 11th meeting.
That may be the hope. That's not the information I'm getting, but again, I can't speak for that commission. So that said, if we could make a series of motions to.
I see Marjorie's raising her hand.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Chair, you could recognize Ms. Shansky or we can continue.
Attorney Shansky, please keep it brief. But go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marjorie Shansky. Thank you. I'm surprised to hear that the, to the height and the drive-through special permits are being tabled. This is an opportunity. All of the experts are here, and if the commission had any questions, and to the extent there may or may not, indeed, there was some additional information that the commission had requested from the traffic engineer, which has been prepared and submitted. So, you know, they could be very brief, but I don't know why they would be tabled without the opportunity for the commission to tender questions and for us to make sure those records are complete. Thank you.
Well, the only comment I'll make, Attorney Shansky, is that we can't vote on any of those.
Understood. But the hearing, but but the hearing is open, and that is the time when information can come to you. So. And we're not trying to consume your evening, but if you had questions either for Mr. Sullivan about height or for anybody having to do with the drive-throughs, which would include either both traffic and possibly architecture from Ms. Kieranan. I'm just saying, it might take five minutes, but I would, I would ask you not to table them without understanding that you have no questions.
So, Anne, would it be appropriate to elicit the opinions of other commissioners as to whether to table or to open discussion on this, on these items that Marjorie has just referenced?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would just suggest we'd go through the items one by one and bring them up one at a time and vote appropriately or make motions appropriately as we do.
Okay.
So, if you're okay with that, the first item.
Let's first, let's first cover Stonehouse Lane so that applicant is not.
Understood. I'm saying, take everything in order on the agenda.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. The first item, 17 Benton's Knoll, map eight, lot 2417. This is a PDD applicant agent, Dominic Seren Gacy of Torsten Stone and Garden, on behalf of the owner, John Frankie, special permit for landscape improvements within Benton's Knoll. I would request that because of the noticing issue, the commission vote to table this application until the next meeting.
So moved. Okay, thank you. Let's, we will vote. Roger?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Am I working now?
Yes.
Yep, excellent. Then yes.
Okay, Scott, you said yes. And Larry?
Yes.
And I will, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
The next item on the agenda, 45 Stonehouse Lane, map 33, lot 15, zone R3. The applicant is Todd K. Anderson of Anderson Surveying LLC, on behalf of the town of Guilford. This is a re-subdivision of a parcel for the affordable housing development. This was tabled at your last meeting, so you'll need to vote to bring it forward, and then we can open the public hearing on that item.
Who's that? Table?
Second.
All right, we'll take a vote on that. Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington, you're muted.
Yes.
And Mr. Edmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Rizzolo?
Yes.
And I will, yes.
Todd, are you here? You are here. Do you want to share your screen and present this item?
I do not know how to share my screen. I just recently got a new camera and haven't figured it out yet.
Let me, okay, I will.
I'm doing good that you're seeing me on my new camera.
Okay, let me share. I will share your.
You're not looking up my nose anymore.
I will share your map with the commission. Give me just a second.
Thank you.
You appear in high definition as well.
Awesome. So this is the same property that was before the Planning and Zoning Commission back a few years ago. I think this is the identical configuration of what we presented a few years ago. It was approved. The Mylar was never filed, so it basically became null and void. We're back to you again tonight to solidify this division for that middle parcel of the land on Stonehouse Lane, which will eventually become an affordable housing project. The bulk of the land to the south is going to remain municipal land of the town, and then we are carving out almost a minimum area for the building that holds the food pantry and the daycare on Stonehouse Lane and the remains of the old foundation of that house that burned down. We do not have development plans ready to present as of yet. We are dividing this property off in the hopes that the Housing Commission that is going to be ultimately building this site can gain ownership of the property to gain their funding to further their process. That's my understanding of their process. So all of that development plans will be coming to you probably by my guess towards the end of the year. It has to go through inland wetlands and also a DEP flood management certification because it does, part of the property is in the flood zone. So all of that stuff has to happen prior to coming back before your eyes. So tonight's focus is just to separate out this piece of property that will be developed into affordable housing in the near future.
Hey, Todd, this is Sean. So is parcel C going to remain part of Guilford town property?
Yes, it is. That, that holds a part of the property, which is why you see that kind of weird angled property line to the south and southeast of this property kind of wraps around an old landfill that, from my understanding, was from the 40s and 50s. It was mainly a bottled dump, but being that it is a landfill, it can't be on any part of the property that is subject to state and federal funding for this affordable housing project. So Mike Harkin went out there and did soil testing, and they basically did transects along that area to figure out where the edge of that landfill is. So that property line kind of circumvents around the edge of that landfill.
Yeah, and the, and the access road to this property will be before the food pantry and daycare center?
Yes, it's coming, it's coming in off of that existing entrance off of Stonehouse Lane. There will be a right-of-way that leads into this property.
Okay.
That is that hatched area between the gravel area and the parking lot that has.
Right, right after, right after the old site of the Rollwood Farm.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'm gonna stop sharing. Uh, Mr. Chair, this is a public hearing item, so you might want to solicit comments from the public.
First, any questions from commissioners? Nope, hearing none. I would entertain anyone from the public who would like to speak for this application.
If you could please raise your hand or otherwise, raise your hand electronically or raise your hand physically. Uh, we can identify you.
Seeing none, I will, I will ask for anyone among the public who would like to speak against this application.
I have nobody, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So I think, given our introduction and the fact that the other items are tabled, I believe we can close this public hearing and vote on this afterwards. Is that correct?
I would, I think it's cleanest if you close this particular item and vote on it now.
Okay, all right.
I have a question to close on this agenda item.
All right, we'll take a vote. Roger?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Uh, Larry, are you still there?
Yes, yes.
Yep, okay, and Scott?
Yes, Ted's here too now.
Oh, oh, yes. Oh, Ted. Oh, hello, Ted.
It took me a while to get it.
Mr. Secretary, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, before we move further, you may want to officially acknowledge Ted as being seated. I think we have seven now, so.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I, well, I'm not sure if that takes a vote, but I will officially acknowledge Mr. Sands, our new newly minted secretary of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Excellent.
Make a motion to approve this application?
Second.
About Stonehouse Lane?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Scott. Roger?
Yes.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Aye.
Thank. Larry?
Yes.
Um, and Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sands?
Yes.
And I will vote, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thanks, Todd.
Bye.
Mr. Chair, the next, the next item on the agenda is 1940 Boston Post Road, map 79, lot 41, and map 78, lot 39, zone BMUNSC. The agent is attorney Marjorie Shansky for the applicant owner, Robert Sacks, principal of 1940 Boston Post Road LLC. This is a special permit to allow building height in excess of 40 feet per section 4.5 point D, table notes number four. This application was continued at your last meeting. You should decide at this moment what you would like to do.
Well, I, I think we should preface any, you know, pending motion or decision by commissioners on the fact that we can't, I, I think I'm correct, Anne, we cannot vote on this.
You cannot, but you can receive, Attorney Shansky is correct. You can receive additional information. You can query her as to any questions you may have, and you can take testimony from the public if there is any. So there are things you can do. If you choose to do so.
Okay. I, I, I think I'm open to that. Attorney Shansky has taken her time to be here, and we appreciate that. So Attorney Shansky, would you like to make some comments about the building height?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Marjorie Shansky and while, and Robert Sacks, the principal of the owner, is here, and I have my veritable cast of thousands, but I'll introduce Ray Sullivan of Sullivan, our architectural group, who is the architect for the residential development. Since we last saw you, we have now completed our review with the design review committee on every aspect of the development. The residential structures had been approved earlier on, and we just tidied up some additional landscaping details with them. If you have, and I think we have had a, a complete presentation from us with respect to the rationale and the special permit criteria that we meet. But here is Mr. Sullivan, if the commission had any questions, and otherwise we'll be happy to be continued to your next meeting if there's no comment from the commission or the public. Thank you.
Yes, so I, I'm Ray Sullivan. I know we gave the presentation, and I'd be happy to share a section or discuss the, the height of the building. When we went through the design review committee, you know, we talked about creating this, this, this look, this image of this project of the shingle-style home or the shingle-style, you know, building architecture, and, 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 and they liked that style, you know, you know, quite a bit. So, I mean, we could do flat roofs. We can bring the roof down, but, you know, I, you know, I think that the, the shingle-style architecture, which, which has attic and roof pitch to it, you know, creates this sense of style that is, you know, consistent, you know, with the town of Guilford. You know, they were very much in favor of it. So, you know, so that, you know, that brings the height from the average grade up to the highest point of the roof, you know, you know, beyond the, you know, what is allowed. But the design review committee was comfortable, you know, kind of with that look and that height.
And if you recall, Mr. Chair and Commission, this is also a reduction of the footprint of the previously approved development, so it has a lot of benefit for the inland wetlands and the conservation areas and reduction of impervious cover for the site. So it has a lot of ecological benefits associated with it, but that's.
I, I, I think part of the rationale that you have proposed, Mr. Sullivan and Attorney Shansky, is that raising the height allows parking underneath. Is that correct?
It does, yes.
Thank you. Is, is that the?
We, we can be very brief, Mr. Chairman, because we have a lot of hearing.
No, I think, I think that, that's the chair, the commission, I think the public probably appreciates that. Uh, are there questions from commissioners? Are there any members of the public that have any comments for or against this application? This, this application, which will not be voted on tonight?
Uh, Kristy Rubendons is raising her hand?
Yep.
Yes, Kristy Rubendons, 221 Fitchell Road, Guilford, and a member of the Guilford Affordable Housing Commission. I am in support of, of this application, even at the increased height because of the impact it has both on the ecological reduction of footprint for ecological impacts and the design elements. So I commend the design, the architect on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Marjorie Shansky, and I am reminded that we have, in between then and now, submitted to the town planner the affordability plan, which accords with the requirements of section 830G of the Connecticut General statutes as to its content. And we have appended to that affordability plan the identity of the specific units in the respective buildings to which the affordability covenant will apply. So we have demonstrated, this was in an earlier town planner memorandum, we have demonstrated our compliance with section 6.11 of the regulations. Thank you.
Okay. Attorney Shansky, I just have one comment. My understanding is that your applicant has made repeated design changes. Is your applicant done with making further amendments, changes to their design?
God willing, Mr. Chairman, but the design alterations have been a direct product of the commentary from your peer reviewers. So we're just trying to stay up with the commentary and to demonstrate both cooperation and conformity.
Thank you. As far as you're aware, have changes been made in conformance or in in conformance with the peer review commentary relative to accessibility and parking?
Mr. Chairman, I'm so glad that you asked that question while Ray Sullivan was here at an earlier meeting. He discussed with the commission the misconceptions that had come from the peer reviewer in terms of under which building code or ANSI standard they were functioning, but, but Ray Sullivan would be. But, but Ray Sullivan would be the perfect person to respond to that again.
Right, so, uh, again, Ray, Ray Sullivan, you know, architect. Uh, the, um, uh, you know, the, 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 the comments made were, were, um, slightly inaccurate. Um, the, you know, they, they talked about how many accessible units. You know, there, in Connecticut, there is no such thing as an accessible unit. Uh, in Connecticut, that, that, you know, in the ANSI code, there are four types of units. There's an accessible unit, there's a type A, there's a type B, and a type C. When you go into the Connecticut State Building Code, it says ninety percent of the units shall be a type A, ten percent of them should, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, ni- ninety percent shall be a type B, ten percent shall be a type A. There are no accessible units. So, it might just be, uh, a misconception of the term, right? Because we, you know, we talked about the buildings are accessible. But in terms of what we are building, we're building ten percent type A units and ninety percent type B units. And how we calculate that is very, very specific in the code. Um, and, and how we calculate the number of parking spaces is also very specific. So, I'm a hundred percent confident that we are accurate in how many parking spaces we are providing. Um, and the, the, the reality is that it's the, it's the building department that monitors the handicap code. You know, do you have enough handicap units to have enough handicap parking, what are the size? And, and, and we're happy to, to vet that process, you know, with the, uh, the, the building inspector, if, if that is the route we need to go. But, um, I am a hundred percent confident, uh, that we meet the handicap standards in terms of the number of units, the number of type A units, the number of type B units, and the number of, of parking spaces, and the number of handicap spaces.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, our peer reviewer is going to be doing a presentation when we get to the site plan application on this project. So, I would reserve his comments for when he does that presentation.
Thank you.
And Larry has his hand raised.
Yeah, so, uh, I just wanted clarification from, uh, Attorney Shansky. Uh, you said we meet the requirements of eight thirty G. Uh, you meet the requirements of, uh, Guilford, which is twelve and a half percent of the units affordable. But eight thirty G would require fifty units to be affordable. Are you increasing the number of affordable units?
No, Mr. Commissioner, what I said is that the affordability plan is drafted in accordance with the requirements of an affordability plan under eight thirty G, which is what your regulations refer to. We are providing twelve percent units as section six point one one of your regulations requires. So, I'm sorry for the confusion. The reference to eight thirty G had only to do with the content of the affordability plan with respect to the description of eligibility for units, how income is calculated, the application process, the overseerage of it by the develop, by the, um, management, management company and such. So, I, I apologize for the confusion.
I appreciate your clarification.
Mr. Chair, I do not see anybody else with their hand raised, but, um.
I don't either.
Okay. You may want to vote to continue this hearing to the next meeting. You do not, I would not suggest closing it.
So moved, right? Thank you. Thank you. Um, Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Sands?
Yes.
Uh, Larry?
Yes.
Um, Scott?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is nineteen forty Boston Post Road, map seventy-nine, lot forty-one, and map seventy-eight, lot one, zone SC. The agent is Attorney Marjorie.
I'm sure I'll see him in the next few weeks, though.
We're gonna go on the vote. Yeah, you very much.
Okay.
What about, uh?
Please mute you, yes, thank you.
I got them. Uh, where was I? Attorney Marjorie Shansky for the applicant owner Robert Sacks, principal of nineteen forty Boston Post Road LLC. This is a special permit to allow two drive-throughs in the SC zone per section four point one one, point C, point two, point little C. This application was continued from the last meeting, and the public hearing remains open.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I'm Attorney Marjorie Shansky for the applicant. I'm here this evening with Mark Lancor, our civil engineer, Dymar Engineering, uh, Robin Kiranen, architect from Colliers Engineering and Design, Neil Olinsky from SLR, our traffic engineer, uh, Ryan Roy from Whitestone is here, Susan Fields, our landscape designer is here. Since last we met, um, specifically the commission had, had requested a supplement to the traffic study to take account of the, um, occupancy across the way of the.
Guilford Commons.
Old Navy and one other sort of operation. And Mr. Olinsky has completed that review. We have submitted today a supplement to the traffic reporting, but because Mr. Olinsky is here, if the commission would like to hear him, from him on that point, but we'd be delighted for him to speak to you.
I, I think, uh, we will entertain Mr. Olinsky's comments.
Thank you.
Good evening. Neil Olinsky, for the record, from SLR Consulting. Um, yes, as mentioned, um, thank you, Attorney Shansky. I'm gonna share my screen, if possible, and, and I can share the, uh, addendum letter that we did and our findings. Um, let's see here. So, we heard at the last hearing that there was a request for essentially two things, actually, um, to make sure that the traffic volumes that we analyzed included, um, some vacancies that were in the Guilford Commons, um, back when we had our original traffic counts done. And also regarding, essentially, looking at summer condition traffic on Route One, Boston Post Road. So, what we have here in our addendum letter is a new figure, figure twelve, I'm gonna zoom in a little bit. Uh, if I can, I don't know why it's not zooming in. Here we go. So, what we did to start with the, uh, Guilford Commons, we, we can't go back in time and count, you know, or we can't, we, we didn't go out and do new counts. What we did was, we looked at industry data, essentially, we used trip generation statistics from the, the Institute of Transportation Engineers Traffic Engineering Manual, Trip Generation Manual, rather. And we estimated the amount of traffic that Old Navy and TJ Maxx, specifically what their traffic is within the entire mix. And then we added those volumes from those two stores, around twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand square feet of, uh, commercial store traffic. We added that into the mix, turning left and right into and out of the Guilford Commons intersection, uh, driveway at this intersection. With regard to the summer conditions, what we did is we contacted Connecticut DOT. And every year they release what they call their seasonal adjustment factors, which are, um, traffic factors, essentially that compare month to month the traffic variation on state roadways. And based on that data from Conda, we determined that our original traffic counts, which were from December and March, if we adjusted those to reflect July, July, August, they would be twenty, approximately twenty-three percent higher. So, that's what we did. We increased, that's reflective here, we increased the Route One traffic by twenty-three percent as well. So, that's in the mix, that's reflected here. And the remaining turns into and out on the, um, the west leg here, that's the, the traffic, estimated traffic for Guilford Village West in total. So, we, we analyzed that in terms of capacity analysis and traffic levels of service. I'm gonna scroll back two pages, and we compared that to what we had in our traffic study. So, these three columns here are what we had in our original traffic study, based on essentially the December and March traffic counts, but reflective of the full build of Guilford Village West, these three columns. These three columns on the right are the, es- essentially the bumped up or expanded traffic reflective of summer, the summer expansion or the summer conditions. And the, uh, Old Navy and TJ Maxx in the mix. And if we compare these to these, we can see the difference. Not a whole lot of difference in what we found in terms of levels of service. What we had been projecting for some lo- overall levels of service be Bs, by and large, the same with the expanded summer conditions in the TJ Maxx, Old Navy. Except during the afternoon peak hour, um, instead of a level service B, we're looking at a level service C, which is, in the big picture, not that bad. On a scale of A to F, B and C are still quite good. Some individual movement, uh, levels of service would also see one letter grade difference. But we're still within an acceptable range. You have some Bs, that would be Cs, one A, that would be a B. Uh, but in the big picture, even with summer conditions and the expanded or the, um, additional retail traffic across the street from Guilford Commons, we still, um, we still find that it's gonna be acceptable from a traffic flow standpoint. Um, so that's, that's what we did with our, since the last hearing. And, um, I'd be more than happy to try to answer any questions.
Um, I, I have a question, Neil. Uh, this is, uh, Sean Cosgrove. Um, so, the approaches from Guilford Commons, I would estimate as you make the turn near Panera's, it's probably less than a hundred yards. Um, and I'm not sure what the approach from this new development is envisioned. Um, but, you know, uh, I, I, I see your point about the fact you're not going to a D, you're going to a C for a B in certain cases. Um, but, um, the, it, are, are, are you, are those, are those, um, ratings um, taking into account the, the waiting times in the, the, the skirts or the approaches that are coming up to that light from both sides of Route One?
So, say it again, it, did it take into account this? The, the.
Take into account the, 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 the amount of space there is for cars to queue on both the Guilford Commons side and the, the side where this new development is being proposed?
Yes, yes. So, when we do our traffic level of service analysis, we essentially model what it's gonna be like in the future, inclusive of the, all the number of proposed turning lanes and through lanes and their storage capacity, queuing capacity. So, yes, we did take that into account.
And, and I, I would assume that, uh, state DOT will be changing the sequencing of the lights based on this new development?
Yes, of course. And they're gonna give everything a final and full look and review. But you're correct, I mean, currently this west leg does not exist. And when it gets installed, you're gonna have to, um, revise the way this, not a ma- not a wholesale change, but the, the way the signal operates in terms of the traffic signals phasing and its, um, timings will, will get adjusted to, to add in this fourth leg. And this left, what is now, um, this northbound left, this left turn lane is not here now, for example. Essentially, it's just a striped shoulder. That'll get restripped to make it a left turn lane, and things like that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And I'll, I'll just add, I, I've seen, um, in certain intersections over the period of time, um, that I've been driving through them, that the state DOT had, I mean, they do, they do make adjustments to the timing of the lights. They would, you know, based on new information, they, they actually do change timing, um, depending upon traffic volumes and patterns.
That is correct.
They'll, they'll probably, you know, they, they may come up with a, with a plan, and they may have to adjust it over time.
That's correct, yeah. DOT, especially on their major state roadways, they, um, they monitor traffic. They have a traffic monitoring program where they check traffic volumes, um, every few years, if not more frequently. And on the traffic signals, many of the traffic signals in the state, they do, they essentially optimize and fine tune the way the signals are programmed in terms of the number of seconds for, you know, the side streets versus the left turn lanes.
Right.
They adjust those from time to time as well to accommodate changing traffic patterns.
Yep.
Thank you. Any, any comments from other commissioners?
Yes, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sands, please go ahead.
Yeah. So, last time we talked about the other intersection that's gonna be impacted by this increase in traffic, which is down at Flagmarsh. That would be north on this map. Um, and at the time, it was acknowledged that there were all kinds of problems at this intersection, but that it didn't quite reach the level that, the, that a traffic light was necessary. But with the new data that you have, um, what, you know, how is that intersection impacted?
So, we didn't take a full-blown look at everything. We focused on the, uh, the traffic signal. But I can tell you is that Conda is going to be looking at all of this. They're, they're gonna be reviewing everything. The, in terms of whether or not a signal is warranted, um, that will very well be something that we'll have to look at with Conda. But I don't think it is going to tri- trip the, the threshold to meet a signal because sick, traffic signals, if you wanna boil it down to meeting the, what is called the signal warrant criteria, it's heavily dependent on the amount of side street traffic that is, that is coming out of Flagmarsh Road, for example, throughout multiple hours of the day, not necessarily the, the amount of Route One traffic. And because we're, when we did our supplemental analysis, the, by and large, the, the additional summer, uh, conditioned traffic and the TJ Maxx and, and, um, Old Navy traffic, that was by and large all just Route One traffic and not getting added to Flagmarsh Road. Um, so, that, my gut feeling is it's still not gonna warrant a traffic signal. But I'm not the, the end-all, be-all. Connecticut DOT is gonna review all of this. They have to because Guilford Village West is, is quite, you know, it's, it's large enough, it's gonna require in what is called an Office of State Traffic Administration, OSTA approval, um, review, e- either an administrative reviewer. Actually, it'll be a certificate, actually, now I think about it, which is a higher level review because we're gonna be actually revising that signal right there at Route One in Guilford Commons.
Uh, Ted, I, I just wanna say, I'm glad you brought that up, it's been on my mind. I, I do often take Flagmarsh Road off Long Hill Road to take a left on Route One. And, um, it, it, it's not, it's not overly challenging, but if there's a, even a moderate increase in traffic of, um, cars going north on Route One, or, or no, going towards Branford, you know, crossing Route One, going left is gonna be a little bit more challenging. So, you know, I, I think as Neil said, the state will weigh in, and we'll see what happens.
Yep. Yeah, I don't have a whole lot more to add, ultimately, it's gonna be the state's call. But they do follow federal criteria in what is called the manual and uniform traffic control devices, or the MUTCD, which uses basically those standard, uh, thresholds to determine if a particular intersection has enough traffic throughout the course of a day, coming out of the side street primarily, to re- you know. Coming out of the side street primarily to, you know, require a traffic signal. They're going to look at all that as part of the Oster review, almost certainly.
Um, so, you know, Marjorie Shansky introduced Neil, but, uh, this. Particular item on the agenda is, even though we can't vote on it. Specifically references to drive-throughs and we have not. Well, you talked about that. Is, uh, is that the extent of your presentation, Attorney Shansky?
Well, I was just tying that the traffic generation question. That the commission asked last time to the new information that was available to us. Um, I think, uh, virtually everything else, uh, will be captured under the site plan review. Uh, item on the agenda.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Scott has his hand up.
Oh, Scott, please.
Um, Scott Evans, uh, probably a question from Marjorie. I don't know if you remember, but. Two minutes ago, when we first talked about this and looked at the driveways, um. A question I had then, and I'm still wondering now if maybe you have an answer, or maybe you're still working on it, but how are we going to memorialize the? Restrictions that you, uh, said you were going to put on these driveways in terms of the number of cars available. Um, one of the drive-throughs you were saying was specifically used for pickup, not for ordering and picking up. And my question was, how are we going to memorialize that either on the drawings or, uh, in the application somehow? Uh, so that if the lease, if an owner of the property changes or a lease of the property changes, that, um. They don't forget or try to use them, try to use the drive-through in a way that hasn't been approved.
We can certainly, and I don't know if Mr. Lancor has done this, but we can certainly add a notation at the pickup window. Facility that says pickup window only, but it's going to primarily be controlled and captured through your conditions of approval. Which will be, and I'm happy to. To offer some restrictive language that can be considered. Um, but that's, that's where it's going to occur is in the conditions of approval. Because it is what we have asked for and we have asked for. A drive-through window and a pickup window and that's consistent in the call and response sort of. You'll restrict it just as we've described it.
Okay, so, uh, Ann, could we have a condition where we try to nail that down as best we can?
Yeah, we may, we may need to have a special meeting to, um.
Yeah.
Work on deliberations and possible conditions, but yes, I will make an note of that.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, thanks. Thank you for that, Scott. Any other commissioner questions?
I just have a quick question, just from my understanding. I was looking at the level of service in the thing where it's graded A, B, C, D, like what, what exactly does that mean? I'm not sure I follow it, uh, well enough to understand the.
Is this, is this for Neil?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Sure thing. Let me share my screen again. Um. So levels of service are essentially a, a measure of average traffic delay. Motorist traffic delay. Um. During the period that we analyze, which almost always is a, is the peak hour. And A, B, C, D, E, F, they are. Ranges essentially, and we put in our appendix of our traffic report description of what they are. So at a, a signalized intersection. Essentially, it's this column right here. And these are average delays during the busiest hours of the day. Um, so level service B is an average motorist delay. At the intersection approach. For the particular turn lane or through lane. Um, level service B, intersection delay of ten to twenty seconds. Level service C, twenty to thirty-five seconds. So on and so forth. Did that answer your question?
I think so. And that just means also that like if a, if a vehicle has no delay, then that counts as a zero delay. Yes, like if they come up in the light screen, they just go straight through.
Right, yeah, that would fall under kind of, uh, level service A. Yep, less than or equal to ten seconds, so.
I mean, you could have somebody with like a thirty, forty second delay and then like three people go right behind them because they just happen to come up when the light is green. That counts as zeros. And so then you're lowering the average delay.
Yeah, it essentially takes the average of all the traffic during the peak hour. So you're right. These are, you know, averages at the end of the day, so.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Any comments from the public?
Uh, Christie has her hand up again.
Hi, Christie Rubin Dunn's two twenty-one Fitchell Road, Guilford, and speaking as a, a resident. Um, of Guilford who uses the transfer station have, have these, um. I know you have some striping, uh, that seems to go down in front of the transfer station entrance, but. Um, I, you know, I personally experience a lot of traffic, uh, especially if you're making a left-hand turn. Uh, coming out of the transfer station and I wondered if that is, um. If I've missed how that's been addressed, I apologize, but I just wondered if somebody could. You know, you know, give me a, an, a thumbnail sketch of what's been considered. Apart from the striping.
And I, I should point out, uh, Christie, that's a great question. Um, it is quite close to these. Um, this future proposed intersection.
Mm-hmm, okay, right. So would that be part of that intersection or is? Um, I'm not seeing, I'm not visualizing that when I look at the map, the, the site plan, so.
Hmm.
Um.
I can chime in. Neil Alinsky again. So the, I guess I'll share my screen once more. I can pull up an aerial map. Um. It's very unlikely, though, that the intersection at the transfer station. Will be included in the traffic signal. Um, traffic signal is. Two hundred feet away. So I, I highly doubt that cannot, that Connecticut DOT will. Will include this in the four-way intersection. Um, can't fully speak for DOT, but that's my sense. And, um, in terms of the striping directly in front of, on Route One, in front of the. Um, the driveway from the transfer station, that's probably not going to change. Much if at all either. Um, the only difference you're going to see is instead of these little like bubble, um. Painted medians essentially here, this will get restripped as a northbound left turn lane into the Guilford Village West. Driveway in the future, but down here, I don't think it'll change much if at all. And. You know, it, I hate to say it, but it kind of is what it is, you know, the conduct. They, they might look at this and see if, if it warrants a traffic signal in the future. In and of itself and, but it just probably does not have enough traffic throughout the course of the day to do that. And, um, you know, if, if Condot was to put in traffic signals at every single driveway, you'd have. A million signals to maintain and, um, you'd have red lights everywhere, so. I, I, I don't think much is going to change, to be honest, at this specific location.
Okay, okay, um, yeah, it's the, the transfer station is open until three. It's open early in the morning till three, so. It, um, it coincides perhaps with the early morning peak hours. Um. And so that was really where, what I was thinking with the, um, maybe it's not. Uh, maybe that's something we have to address separately from your plan. Um, as, as it sounds, but, um, yeah, thank you for answering. I, I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you, Christie.
Welcome.
All right, um, Ann, do we? I think we, we're, we're done with public comments. Do we have?
You might want to ask one more time if there's anybody who would like to.
Certainly ask. It, it do, for the last time, uh, any other comments from the public? There being none.
I would suggest a motion to continue the application, keep the hearing open until next month.
I will move. Thank you, Ted.
Second.
Thank you. And, uh, we will vote, uh, Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Sands?
Yes.
Uh, Larry?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Harrington? You're on mute.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, Scott?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is nineteen forty, nineteen sixty and nineteen sixty-eight. Boston Post Road, map seventy-nine, lot forty-one, map seventy-eight, lot one, map seventy-eight, lot forty-two. Map seventy-eight, lot forty-three and map seventy-eight, lot thirty-nine. Zones SC and BMU. The agent is attorney Marjorie Shansky. For the applicant owner, Robert Sacks, principal of nineteen forty Boston Post Road LLC. This is a special permit for earthworks per section eight point three excavation, fill and grading. Uh, we cannot open this hearing tonight because it was not noticed properly. So I would suggest a motion to table until your next meeting.
So I will entertain a motion. So moved.
Also.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Sands?
Yes.
Uh, Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Scott Evans?
Yes.
Uh, Bob Harrington?
Yes.
And Larry Zola?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is the text amendment. Uh, per your suggestion for site plan approvals for sign applications. This will remain tabled because we are waiting for the letter back from Scrog on that. We will hear that one next month.
Okay.
Moving on, our first site plan review is nineteen nineteen Boston Post Road. Map seventy-nine, lot thirty-five.
Do we need to vote to close the public hearing?
No, because you continued everything and tabled the other. You voted on what you needed to vote, you tabled the others and continued them.
Okay, right. All right, nineteen nineteen.
Nineteen nineteen, Boston Post Road, map seventy-nine, lot thirty-five, zone SC, applicant agent. Uh, Brian Vassar of Archer Signs on behalf of the owner, Brian Hickey of HRP Guilford LLC. This is a site plan review for one wall sign in a business district. Per section seven point two, point F, point two, point A, and one freestanding sign. In a business district per section seven point two, point F, point two, point little B. Is the applicant here to make a presentation?
I am.
Excellent. Can you walk us through your application? I can share a screen if you don't have it in front of you.
Uh, yeah, if you could, that'd be great. Uh, it's fairly simple. It's a replacement of existing signs. Mattress Firm changed to Mattress Warehouse. Signs are going in the same place.
Okay, so this, this is up in Guilford Commons?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, this.
Ann, anything of note on this application?
Where do I?
Neither do I. It seems pretty perfunctory.
Mm-hmm.
Ann, anything of note on this application?
Nope, fully compliant.
I have a motion to approve, uh, site plan. This application.
Well, let, let's just see. Any questions from commissioners? I'm hearing none, so I think Scott, uh, we're waiting for a second on your motion.
I'll make a second.
Thank you, Bob. Um, Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Uh, Larry Rizzolo?
Yes.
Uh, Ted Sands?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Scott Evans?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you. And thank you, Brian, for coming.
Ben, thank you everyone. Have a great night.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is twenty-three ninety-two Boston Post Road. Map seventy-eight, lot sixteen and map seventy-eight, lot fifteen A. The zone is PRB three. The applicant agent is Charlene Linton of Cohen and Akampura on behalf of owners. Peter Carlo and Danielle Chiocha, sorry if I just killed that name. This is a site plan review for a relocation of a garden business.
Is the applicant, is the applicant here?
Hi, good evening. Uh, I'm Charlene Linton and I actually have beside me Tim Blunden. With Village Green Gardens and the site plan. That he's proposing is because he has to relocate his business. Which is currently located at seven fifteen Boston Post Road. And he would be moving to twenty-three ninety-two Boston Post Road. Which you may be familiar with the Anthony's Restaurant property. That would be the new site. Um, if Ann wouldn't mind sharing the site plan for me, it would be much appreciated.
You know, I'm curious, Charlene, where the, where the site of the current business is.
The site of the current business is in Guilford and has been there for what, thirteen, fourteen years? I have Mr. Blunden beside me, who is the current owner and operator of Village Green Gardens. Do you know where McDonald's is, um, in Guilford near the exit fifty-nine?
Beside Goodwill.
Beside Goodwill?
Yeah.
That's, that's the current spot, but the property is being sold, so he's going to have to relocate.
Okay, thank you.
And you're welcome. Um, I'll have him speak.
Okay.
So the only change is obviously we're taking exactly the same hoop houses. And, uh, uh, moving them from there to the new site. Um. Let's say there's no change in the use of the indoors of, um.
The building.
The building. There's no change in the, the occupancy is going considerably lower. It was approved for. A banquet facility with a hundred people in it. And now our, you know, we're going to have less than five or ten people in the building now. So we're not changing the building. We're not changing any traffic patterns. The only change is six parking spots that were in the back. Um, not really visible from the street. Six parking spots that were in the back are now going to be where the greenhouses are. Um. But with the subtraction of the six parking spots, it, the property as a whole still has more. Parking and as than required for Guilford regulations.
So we would argue that it's a de minimis change, um. And it's, it's zoned and was approved for retail use and so. The space will become more attractive and will remain, um, you know, as, as a retail facility. Uh, and if you, if you look at the site map, you, there is a bit of a legend. I'm sorry, I. Find it quite small. But, um, you see like a lighter orange section with the, uh, let's see if I can. Kind of this area here. Um, those are your proposed.
Hoop houses, green houses. They're temporary structures. They have no heat. They have no, uh, foundation, no water.
Right. And they're currently located at the seven fifteen Boston Post Road location. And he'll be breaking them down and transferring them if, you know, if the plan is approved.
So i- is the, is the, uh, business that was, um, right nearby that. Were for generators and power equipment, are they gone?
Yes, they are. They're no longer there.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from commissioners?
The other thing I would add is that we've had no issues, whether they be neighbor issues, town issues. Zoning issues in the fourteen years we've been there.
Yeah, i- if you could show me the map again, just for orientation, can you show me where, uh, Anthony's Restaurant is?
Certainly. Um, Ann, would you, thank you. So Anthony's Restaurant is. To the right, do you see the dark orange area?
Yeah.
So the Anthony's Restaurant is on the far right third of this building. And then. Tim would be taking over this dark orange area. And then there is a. Sorry?
Uh, which I think is where the generator business was.
Yeah, it, they were there, correct, and they're no longer there.
Right. No, that helps me orient, uh, that picture. Thank you.
Oh, no, you're welcome. So he will be using this, you know, the inside storage area and then putting up, you know, the temporary, um, hoop houses in the outside, um, where the lighter orange area is.
And in front of the hoop houses, we have a
Pergola.
Pergola, wooden pergola, so it makes it, you know, where all the, you know, just makes it nice, it's kind of a buffer to the greenhouses, you know? So you're, you're, you're facing Route One, and you're gonna have plants and all that facing it, you know? Then would change, obviously, with every season. I think there isn't even a picture included in our package.
Yes.
Because we obviously could-
Will your, will your business be seasonal, or will you stay open all year round?
Well, that's always, um, a conversation, you know what I mean? We're open year-round, and in January or February, we might sell four or five customers, but we stay open, you know, you can't be there just when the business is good for the people. You have to pay your dues in the off-season and be there when somebody needs one bag of five-dollar potting soil, you know, as, as a snowstorm is starting, you know, it's just the nature of the, I don't know, the nature of our business, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from commissioners?
Um, are you going to plan on doing some, I don't know, line painting or signage to, you know, maintain, uh, safety, because it looks like people are gonna be walking from your main building towards the greenhouses and back, they'll be driving through to pick up materials or pick up mulch or whatever. Um, I'm just wondering if you're gonna have some signage or some la- line striping to kind of direct people safely?
Yeah, probably line, uh, just some lines on there, because the traffic pattern is not changing. The last person had the same traffic pattern where they drove down and back and picked up supplies down there.
Right.
The only thing is that, you know, we, they had some sheds and some, all that stuff would be gone, you know? It'd be cleaned up a lot.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, I think, um, I think we're good.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this site plan application.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. You're approved.
Thank you, thank you, Roger. Um, so let's, uh, let's vote, I guess, um, Roger?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Mr. Sands?
Yes.
Bob Harrington?
Yes.
Uh, Scott Evans?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your business.
I drive by there every, every day. It's gonna be interesting to see, uh, how it progresses.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great place.
Hey, Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda-
Um, we're moving on to
Yep. The next item on the agenda is nineteen forty, nineteen sixty, and nineteen sixty-eight Boston Post Road, map seventy-nine, lot forty-one, map seventy-eight, lot forty-two, map seventy-eight, lot forty-three, map seventy-eight, lot thirty-nine, map seventy-eight, lot one, zones SC and BMU. Agent is attorney Marjorie Shansky for the applicant owner, Robert Sacks, principal of nineteen forty Boston Post Road LLC. This is a site plan application for proposed mixed-use development, including a hundred and sixty-two multifamily residential units, retail, drive-through fast food, drive-through coffee shop, and a restaurant. Um, I will remind the commission that this was, uh, I believe tabled at the last meeting, if not continue, well, it's not a hearing, so it can't continue. Um, so we will want to bring it forward again. We have received a substantial number of additional sets of application material, for lack of a better term, on this. Um, we would like to, um, allow some time for our peer review, peer review team, including Jeff Gordon from Co-Despoty, to make a presentation on their memo. They did not present at the last meetings, would like to do that. And then attorney Marjorie Shansky had some additional information she sent to us, um, late this afternoon that I'm sure she would like to discuss, so um, it's up to you to decide what order you would like to hear those things. Um, so I will hand it over to you.
Well, um, from my point of view, I'm not sure, and I will, you know, certainly entertain comments from other commissioners, I think we'd like to have Mr. Gordon first. Um, anyone else have any comments? The peer review? And, and, and it was sent out to all of you, is, uh, is right up. Did you have a chance to look at it?
Hmm, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. So a- any objection to having, uh, Mr. Gordon go first?
None by me.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gordon, uh, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jeffrey Gordon. I'm principal with Co-Despoty and Associates, uh, two-six-three Boston Post Road in the town of Orange. Um, I will simplify, uh, you have a twelve-page memorandum with, uh, a lot of different points there, but I'm going to, uh, work towards the most recent set of plans that we've been reviewing, and I will say that the goalpost has moved quite a bit, some of it in response to our comments, but also in response to other, uh, staff comments as well. Uh, to go to Mr. Sullivan's, uh, comment about parking and the number of parking spaces required. Uh, I'm not a building code consultant, so I did, uh, contact, uh, a buildings code consultant, uh, building, licensed building official, uh, who is a consultant for numerous towns, uh, and cities in the state of Connecticut regarding the parking requirements. And in the Code eleven, zero point, zero six point three, we are use groups R two, and what's interesting, it does talk about how notwithstanding any conflicts, the more stringent of two prevails in case of conflict. And you have one part of the regulation, uh, that would talk about a percentage of units that would require accessible parking spaces, and another that would be one per unit. Now, under one of the code sections, eleven oh eight, point six, point two, point two, requires that each building must have ten percent or four-plus units that are type A accessible. As, and that was Mr. Sullivan made that comment, ten percent of the units, ninety percent of the units would be type B accessible, that's because you have an elevated building. You can make more units accessible as were needed. Uh, the section eleven oh six point three requires one accessible space, uh, or two percent per building under the building. Uh, so the question you have here is if I do two percent of a hundred and sixty-two units, I would require three point two-four accessible parking spaces for this development, whereas if I had one per unit, I would require seventeen. Uh, in respect with our observations as to how accessible placards are distributed by the Department of Motor Vehicles, I, I think that going in with the minimal possible amount of handicap accessible parking spaces would not serve this community or, or the town as a whole well, especially when the type B accessible can be modified, and you could wind up with more and more people receiving the placards. The other thing, and I'd like to share my screen, if I can?
Yep, you should be able to.
Okay, are, are we saying that all right?
Uh, not yet, but give it a second.
Now, now we do, now we do.
Okay, as we look at the, uh, the footprint of the garage, you have an accessible route that goes by the stairwell straight out, and that's adequate. But having a handicap accessible space near the elevator lobby, they're undimentioned, but you require ten feet and five-foot stripe zone, and the state building official has deemed that you cannot utilize that stripe zone for both the parking spot and your access. You, you can't double-dip on that, and he's determined that down in a number of towns in Fairfield County, and he's made that as a determination. I, I think this is really achievable. Um, you know, we could make the other spaces compact car spaces and borrow a little more space to get the ten to five and, and three or four feet that we need, because otherwise you run the risk of opening a door into an area that's being used as an accessible parking spot, and we have that repeating, uh, on the other buildings as well. So that was just the, uh, issue about parking, and I think the commission, looking at the overall safety, health, and welfare, do you want to get away with two percent of your parking spaces accessible? When I have a clubhouse, I have a pool, I could have guests, all sorts of things, or would we be looking, uh, to do something that is better, more of a planning, uh, thing rather than the bare minimum? Also, uh, again, we didn't note it in the floor plans, which were accessible units, but uh, some would have to be designated, uh, and uh, I'm sure that the building review will take care of all of that. Okay. Okay, we also saw in some of the subsequent, uh, submissions that the EV, uh, CES parking spaces have been added, and we do appreciate that, both in the residential and the commercial areas.
Hmm.
Okay, um, then we do have a rather broad discussion about grading, and, uh, notwithstanding what is practical, what's applied in many different areas, we have a regulation that says all finished cut or fill slope should not exceed a three-to-one ratio or less as may be required by the commission. Uh, we see no provision for steeper slopes except during construction. Uh, also, there is a provision about excavation. I know you're gonna hear that separately, but how it impacts the site plan is something that we would bear in mind here. Now, uh, just we think about two-to-one slopes are often used, sometimes steeper are used, but the state of Connecticut modified the soil erosion control guidelines did point out that a three-to-one slope is a preferable standard or even shallower when possible to minimize erosion control, so uh, whether or not that was part of the discussion when this regulation was adopted, recommended by your engineer, public comment, public hearings to adjust your regulation, um, there would be something to that effect as to whether or not uh, three-to-one slope standard would be feasible. Uh, and what we also did is we get over here. We did perform a grading analysis to see what would happen if we were doing the three-to-one slopes. And as we look behind the residential building number three, we can see a three-to-one slope in red would chase all the way down into the wetland area. And we see also on the, uh, the access drive near the pickleball courts and whatnot, the slope here would also get down closer to the, uh, to a wetland area, which would further affect that regulation. Now, also, the soil erosion control guidelines also stipulate that when you have a elevation change of fifteen feet or greater, you're supposed to have what they call a reverse bench cut into the slope so as to intercept the surface runoff and prevent erosion. And, uh, that would be something that would even stretch that fill slope out further as you put in that intercepting bench. And over on, uh, the commercial sheet, which was C four A, where the biofiltration area is, we would see that that fill would bring that area over the property line um, and into a wetland area as well. So the three-to-one is a pretty substantial consideration, uh, to, to make here. Also, by the treatment area, again, we have, if we're looking at a three-to-one slope, we're into the wetland area over here as well, and it continues on down and towards these mitigation areas. Okay, regarding just site planning in general, uh, we're looking at the, uh, commercial area and the handicap parking. What I, I noted here, which is kind of interesting, I cut my teeth working for the New Haven Redevelopment Agency and the City Planning Department. Parking lots were my life for a while, and, uh, when we have handicap accessible parking, what is the way that we're accessing to be a safe route? Now, the four spaces over here by restaurant B actually have a route that goes over a storm, um, storm structure with manhole covers on it, so uh, we also have another manhole in the middle of the stripe zone here, so if you have a manhole in the middle of an area and you are walking with crutches or a walker and whatnot, that obviously is a detail that would need to be fleshed out. Uh, another area that's tremendously of concern to me are the handicap, uh, or accessible parking spaces located here, uh, I'm circling with the cursor in front of retail A. We have the driveway coming in with no traffic control, so I'm, I'm really gonna be looking at somebody coming in and making a right turn, right, without any real provision, right into the area where people are ostensibly crossing. Um, I also could be coming from the back of the building and making a left turn, right turn, or a left turn coming through here with a fairly blind sight line with the corner of the building there. So I, I certainly think that without any kind of traffic or stop bars or any kind of control, these are not the best situated parking spaces, nor are these, and not that I want to design for somebody else, but I just don't understand why we just didn't see handicap parking over in this area where they could just go straight onto a walkway and, and have a protected area and not have to cross the main fire lane accessway. So again, there's a little in the way of safety margins here. We have a lot going on here. You have an intersection here and an offset intersection over here. So there's a lot of different maneuvers that can be taking place in a very short amount of area by an entrance to a building. Okay, now I will go on to the coffee shop. Okay, I am, uh, kind of concerned about these parking spaces over here, which are also, uh, the with, last I saw there with the electric charging location, and I have the accessible parking spaces, which are well situated by the entrance, but I do have a lot of traffic, people coming this way, people going this way, people coming through the drive-through and going out that way, so there's a, a lot of conflict point right in this area over here. And, uh, there was some work that was done on this drive-through because we're expecting a vehicle to make a turn, make a continual turn and double back and get into, uh, the queue. And, uh, it's difficult for larger vehicles to make some of these maneuvers. Uh, we, we had, um, the traffic engineer, we appreciate, provided, uh, an overlay based on probably an animation, and these things are really a good design tool because they show you what a vehicle is capable of doing under very good conditions with a very good driver, uh, hitting certain milestones in the maneuver. But it's always good to have an extra degree of, uh, of a generous driveway opening and whatnot, because not every driver is as good as another one, so we want to really make allowance for that as well. So again, we have these maneuvers taking place here. The other thing we have to keep in mind also is exiting a patron from this coffee shop who wants to go northbound on, on Route One, really has to come back out and circum navigate through the entire parking lot to get back out and go northbound again, unless, uh, you know, I made the comment that they might come out here and drive against that geometry, and, uh, it said I was speculating, but I've been observing this for, uh, forty-eight years, and people don't follow traffic signs and they fight the geometry every which way rather to make the shortest trip, so we do have that concern. we do have that concern there as well. See, what else do I have here? Also, uh, I had a commentary about loading. The loading for the coffee looks pretty good. It would basically come in, access the uh dumpster area or back in to the loading area to offload and then be able to exit out. Uh, the radiuses here may be a bit tight, uh depending upon the type of trucks that are offloading. Uh, I do urge tremendous caution, no matter what anybody says. Uh, you don't normally get a fixed box truck that makes deliveries. Um, you could order something from Macy's and have it come in a tractor trailer. We really need to understand that there could be times when you have a trailer parked in this driveway here offloading or parked trying to park someplace over here because they can't make this turn or they have no place to go once they get into this uh tight area. So we really need to anticipate that. Uh, I did in my report show you a Dunkin' Donuts that we had designed. We had everything figured out where the truck would go. But we never anticipated that a Dunkin' Donuts tractor trailer has his offloading door on the passenger side of the tre- trailer. So they actually wound up having to back their truck into the site in order to be able to offload. Turning templates and general standards don't tell you about these unique vehicles that may be delivering onto a, a property. And again, just the all northbound traffic would have to go through the entire parking lot and basically all service vehicles would have to navigate all the way through the parking lot to go back out to the signalized intersection, whether it's north or southbound. Again, looking at restaurant A, this pad site here. Uh, it has been stated that the undisclosed tenant does not use an order board, but generates orders online, but there's no guarantee that that tenant will be finalized. There's no guarantee that that will be the last tenant to ever use the building. And in addition, regardless of how orders are placed, there's still potential for queuing issues where the vehicles can be backing out into this intersection and blocking access at this, uh, again, another crunch point over here. And again, we also said that this one radius over here is not adequate for a larger truck that might service the site. You know, sir, and if a truck comes through here, they could be blocking the rest of the queue if they are waiting to get through this pickup window. And again, any trucks that come through this site again have to navigate through the entire parking lot to uh, to exit back out. They can go here and to the, this driveway if they're going to go southbound, or if they're going northbound, they have to go back to the main driveway again. So uh generally speaking, again, you know, the overlay for the SU thirty vehicles and pickup trucks. Um, they're really showing fairly ideal conditions and they're valuable tools. But again, uh, those are optimum conditions. The design tolerances that are more generous would uh be beneficial uh to accommodate real life situations, everyday drivers. Um, and the other thing that I had a comment on is uh this driveway access here. Uh, we have a, a straight apron line over here. We have a non-tangent radius over here. The return doesn't come back tangent to the road. And some of the uh other descriptions show the kind of a circuitous routing for the larger vehicles where it looked like they're crossing both lanes and then taking a, an odd route to be able to access the throat to this driveway. Uh, and anybody coming down southbound here uh would not be able to make this radius at all without crossing into one of the outbound lanes or driving over the, the sidewalk. Hmm. So again, we do have templates. They are design tools and not the end all be all, but um personally, I, I, I see certain issues here. Okay, let's see what else I have here. Again, we have the uh issues with the three to one slope that take place over at this biofiltration basin. And uh, we'd also have to see how the slopes take place over in this corner. Uh, one of my earlier comments was about the distance from the outdoor patio. Uh, it was not dimensioned from this corner to this residential piece here. It's close. It looks like, you know, moreover, it's like a hundred and three or a hundred and five feet, but something that that is that close, it would be good if they actually would dimension it. And again, my comments about the three to one slope are good. There was also a previous set of uh plans that showed porous pavement, but that seems to have been withdrawn. That has been eliminated as well. So again, the circulation through the site, I think, is concerning. Uh, service truck access. Uh, the protection for the accessible parking spaces over here is concerning. Uh, some of the travel radii in through the site um is interesting and this intersection over here, I think, uh deserves some reconsideration. So for the most part, those, those are my comments. And uh, all my landscaping comments, I think, were pretty much addressed earlier as well as light.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gordon. Um, would you, I mean, you know, not to suggest you would make a pejorative comment. You, you, you've been made, making a lot of objective observations about this based on your expertise. But would you just say that um basic parlance that that they're, they're taking shortcuts with parking and they're trying to pack a little bit too much into a space that is not as well planned as you would suggest?
Well, listen, I, I, I work on the other side of the table too, and our, our goal is to get the highest and best use and the, and the, the best return out of a piece of property. But this is a very challenging piece of property. It has a lot of restrictions on it. Um, and some of them, uh, you're not going to resolve until you have a special permit hearing on the excavation until you get an interpretation on what is excavation error. And, and th- this plan that you see here really rises and falls on that issue. Uh, it also rises and falls on the three to one slope issue. Because if the three to one slope, um, that, that could fail in wetlands because uh, you know, why, why should I allow you to fill in there? Or a regulation amendment or a variance or some sort of other nature. Not for me to tell you what to do, but I, I find certain areas that I don't think comply at the get-go. And I would certainly want to see full compliance and you know, I've had this discussion with other city planners. I wouldn't ever ask somebody to really squeeze in some poor parking spaces to meet every last number. I'd rather lose a few spaces and have a better flow of traffic and have a safer flow of, of traffic than meet this one little thing and have a couple of odd parking spaces located in the poor area. And I think that within the context of your regulations, where you're, we're reviewing for what is the best for the safety, health and welfare of the community. Uh, I, I think you have a little bit of room on that. But uh, right now I think there are a number of things here that they do well to address.
Thank you. Um, I will entertain questions from commissioners for Mr. Gordon. Scott Edmund, you're, you're in the business of building apartments. I mean, do you have any questions for Mr. Gordon?
Questions came up. He was pretty thorough in his review.
All right, so, and should we um ask Attorney Shansky if she has or she, if her applicant wants to comment on this?
Oh, yes.
Um, yeah, I, I think that's appropriate, Mr. Chair. I just want to add um a men- just one mention that I forgot to mention earlier.
Oh.
Um, you did get an additional um memo from town engineer Janice Plaziac. Um, she concurs with Mr. Gordon on a number of points. Um, namely the issues arising around this question about the excavation grading and fill issue. Um, so I would urge everyone to, we won't read that into the record. That is part of the record, but I would urge everyone to review that memo as well. Um, but yes, I think it's appropriate to have Attorney Shansky.
You, you've got a little bit to re- address Attorney Shansky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marjorie Shansky for the record. I will remind the commission that they have heard the site plan description not only from Mark Lancor, civil engineer and uh Robin Kieran, who did the commercial side um, architecture, um, but Dave Sullivan, the, the traffic engineer from SLR, who has examined all of those routings, who has provided the queuing information, who is providing the truck turnage, uh, turning information. And what I heard from um Mr. Gordon was a lot of speculation about, oh, uh, these things could happen. But I cannot imagine a more distinguished, experienced group of design professionals who have been before this commission with this, with this proposed development. So and, and I, who spent twenty-four years on the State Codes and Standards Committee adopting and enforcing the state building code and fire safety code, have complete confidence in Mr. Sullivan when he expresses his complete confidence in the um conformity of the parking in quantity um and type that has been provided, which is at the end of the day. Uh, y- you can look at numbers. The building uh official will be looking at that from the accessibility perspective. So I, I don't have um any sense of, of uh remedial activity that needs to um demonstrate anything other than the zoning conformity that we are bringing before this commission. But because he spoke of it at great length and because I have written a letter to the commission that I've sent in today about it, um, I want to take a moment to talk about section eight point three, the excavation grading and fill section that, to which he has referred and, and which the town engineer has now joined in. Um, I have studied the origins and application of this section of your regulations. Because when the town planner reached out to me in April after we had been underway and conversing with the town for many months by then uh and said, what are you doing about section eight point three? It was jarring. And so I commenced a study of the uh regulation itself, of the administration of the regulation by this commission. And uh, my conclusion is that this section eight point three does not apply to this development. And I wanted, I put this in my letter, but I want to take a few minutes to explain that to you. Um, I reviewed prior versions of the zoning regulations going all the way back to twenty-ten. Uh, I have reviewed agendas of the Planning and Zoning Commission both since the adoption of the recodification on October seventh or the effective date twenty-twenty-three. And although my letter says we are thus far back to twenty-twenty-two, we are now back to twenty-twenty. So I've looked at five years of agendas before this commission. And we will continue this survey. And that is the basis of my belief that this regulation does not apply. When the regulation, starting at the twenty-ten regulation, and it was in effect even before then, it was section two seventy-three hyphen sixty-six and it was called earth excavation operations. And that had a very specific application in front of this commission. It is directed, as the title would imply, at earth excavation operations and materials story, storage rather, and control that were not necessarily part of the concomitant site preparation that is inherent in development. That is to say, if I were going to mine a property and not have a development proposal, if I were going to remove a mountain and then just level a field without altering or developing anything. Um, that's what earth excavation operations would apply to. I did some Westlaw research and found only one case in the state of Connecticut Committee to Save Guilford Shoreline Inc. versus Arrow Paving, two thousand and seven, some of you may remember it. And it was a private effort to enjoy the conduct of a paving operation in which, among other things, stockpiling of asphalt and other materials was occurring. And the Guilford zoning enforcement officer, which I, who I think was Reggie Reed at the time, had admonished uh and notified the paving company that it needed a two seventy-three six hyphen sixty-six site planner special permit review. And that was the, more or less the nature of what the earth excavations, operations, section of the regulations related to. Now, in two thousand and ten, if you read the few sections that comprise that earth excavation operations section, there was also a section two seventy-three hyphen sixty-nine that said, quote, "The commission may adjust any standards or conditions in, uh, provided in section two seventy-three hyphen sixty-eight, which were the standards, if in its judgment such uh adjustment is necessary to maintain the purpose and intent." In twenty-twenty-three, when you recodified the zoning regulations, you renamed two seventy-three hyphen sixty-six excavation, fill and grading. And you made some minor changes and some more substantive changes to the language. And for example, in twenty-twenty-three, you added a purposes section for it. This section regulates the excavation and filling of earth materials so that such activities will minimize hazards from open pits and steep slopes. A mining operation. And it goes on with a bit more language. So I'm, I am concluding that the language of the purposes section is consistent with an earth removal operation that is separate from the exercise of site preparation associated with a development proposal. And indeed, there is an exemptions section at section eight point three point C, and that was in the predecessor um, regulation that relates to certain uh development enterprises. So, um, the conclusion that I draw is not only based on this language and this change in language and the language of the regulation, but it's borne out by this commission's administration of this section over the years, both when it was section two seventy-three sixty-six and in what I will call the early years of section eight point three, because we are in the early years. As I say, we, we went first from October seventh, twenty-twenty-three to the present. Not one section eight point three special permit. Not once does section eight point three appear on an agenda of this commission between the adoption of the regulation and today. Well, today I'm on it, but that's the first time. Working back, we have located one excavation permit application in twenty-twenty-two where the permit related to the installation of a pond-fed irrigation system for an orchard. That is, the excavation of the pond was the point of the application and no other regulatory approval was filed with this commission. Uh, I see Mr. Anderson is still on the call. He was a person uh who was involved in that application. When I asked him earlier today, when's the last time you filed an, uh, an excavation grading and fill permit? He said it's been other than this one, years ago. So the absence of either earth removal operations or excavation grading and fill permit request does not mean that the commission has not reviewed and approved many development applications. Indeed, you have approved many. The very Allison Pastorfield special permit for for Guilford Village West that was originally issued in two thousand and eleven does not reference or include a special permit under Section two seventy-three sixty-six, which was in the regulations at that time. Nor did the fourteen eighty-six Boston and many, many others. It's just not what you do. Development necessarily entails site preparation, and it appears that a distinction has long been observed in Guilford that site preparation for a specific development does not require a separate Section eight point three, or when it was two seventy-three sixty-six, permit unless for a standalone earth removal exercise or operation. Respectfully, the outside peer reviewer who's stultifying interpretation of Section eight point three, which we also disagree with for reasons we're happy to discuss with you, has suggested a path that is out of kilter with the administration of the zoning regulations in Guilford, and indeed would be extraordinarily selective. It's not how you have administered your regulations. We have Mr. Lancor, we have Mr. Roy, the geotechnical engineer on the record and available to this commission to talk about the feasibility and safety associated with the proposed development as presented. But this is um our position and for the commission's consideration, because I understand this is like, oh, something. This section is not applicable because we are here with site plans and development that will be at the end of this development process. And because I am from time to time in front of this commission, and in fact, on my computer, I have so many iterations of the Guilford zoning regulations over the years, including certain drafts in two thousand and twenty-one, when you were on your way to the two thousand and twenty-three version. I am reasonably confident that I am correct. And I am confident that I am correct. And this is not how you have been administering your regulations, and I would say that this is not the moment to start. That if there wants to be, and, and, and I believe, sort of as a side comment, that when it changed from earth removal operations to excavation, grading and fill, it may have been a conflation of two competing ideas. One, to continue to capture control of independent operations that were earth removal operations, and then maybe to adopt something in the regulations that controlled other situations. But, but that's not how it's been enforced for at least the last fifteen, well, I'll go back to two thousand and seven for over twenty years. So, um, with that being said, Mr. Lancor's here to respond to other things that have come up um, in Mr. Gordon's comments, and the rest of my team is here. So, um, for your consideration.
I just have one comment, Attorney Shansky, and that is the, the exception um, that you referenced that was approved by this commission having to do with a pond. Um, that was an agricultural exception. And we had no um wherewithal to deny it. That was on Little Meadow Road.
Right.
It was within the last five years. Um, a lot of us, a lot of us did not approve it, but we couldn't deny it because of the agricultural exemption that the applicant had. So just be careful with the examples you use. And, you know, we're, this is not a court of law. Um, you know, you, you sound like you're, you sound like we're all in the um in the, in the, the box of the accused. It, it
No, no.
It doesn't work that way.
No, 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 that's not the point. The point was, uh, the, I, I described what the nature of the permit was. And certainly from an inland wetland perspective, they have the agricultural exemption. I, you know, whether or not that applies to this commission.
And we have yet to hear from them. And, and you know, you're, the, the application um, has some flaws. It, it just, it just does. And, you know, you're, you're, the timing of your permit applications, um, a lot of the aspects of this whole application, even though, even though I think, I think there are a lot of people who um, approve of the concept of, of this overall plan. We, as a commission, just want to be sure that the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed. Um, you know, you can go, you know, chapter and verse through all of the tactical aspects of what we may have missed, but we're gonna, we're gonna play it by the book.
The book, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, is that in fifteen years, you have never required a separate permit associated, including for Allison Pastorfield, associated with an actual development project. And we can just leave it at that for the record. My point was only in saying, here's the regulation, here's what I think is the genesis of it, here's where I think it went amok in two thousand and twenty-three, but here's how you've administered it, which is not to require this permit. Thank you.
Um, any other comments by other commissioners?
Was there a response from um from the civil engineer about the proposal from Mr. Jeff Gordon about moving the handicaps in the commercial area around to the side of the building? It seemed like a solution that doesn't necessarily have a lot of pushback, or could you explain uh if that's an option or not?
Well, Mark Lancor for the public record, and I know this is not a hearing, and it's a site plan review. But to answer your question, um, and if you don't mind, I'm going to actually share the screen if you can. If that's a possibility.
Yep, you should be able to.
Uh, thank you, Anne. Uh, uh, let's see.
Especially because combined with his comment was the comments about that crosswalk going over top of some storm drainage and whatnot.
Yay. Can you see the, what's on the?
It's coming up.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, I'm just going through a few things first to get to that drawing.
Right.
Well, to your point, um, not, it's, it's, yes, some of these things, you know, we take, uh, we take comments, we take them seriously, you know? You know, nobody's, I hate to say, is that, uh, when you collaborate with the many of uh, uh, technical people in this field, you know, eventually you get to a, a solution that everybody's happy with. Uh, to, to the point of moving it in this direction here, which this commission is really not privy to as much, except, you know, when we went through design review, part of the aspects of design review is with this restaurant, this could, could be a patio area, uh, outdoor patio area, which uh, could we move it in this direction? We don't know who the tenant is at this point. Um, but in the, in, in working with design review, this whole corner was to be an outdoor patio, something that they wanted to see that we had the ability to bring people outside. So if you had an outdoor patio area, then as much as you put those spaces, then those folks would end up conflicting, except if there was a door here. So we don't have all those details yet. But to, you know, if, if, if they came to the point at that juncture where we had a tenant and we knew exactly what they were looking for, yes, we could easily put those spaces over there. But with regards to the sewer manhole cover, that, again, we don't have the details yet, but we can make sure that that, those manhole covers are not going to be in the accessible route to the building. And this is not, and even if you go across the street, this is not an unusual condition at all to have your accessible spaces for handicap directly in line with what is considered a fire lane. You go across the street, it's pretty evident. That's how they're done across the street in the other plaza. Now, with regards to being able to move a few spaces, we can easily move these spaces, flip it with this area here and have it here, so it's further away, and then you have the access here. These are all, you know, what I call is, you know, is, is some housekeeping stuff that can be done. So we can accommodate that. Not, not, not an issue, not an issue at all. Um, and so I, hopefully that answers your question. We can, you know, we can make those, make those changes so that it works. But I, I would suggest that these spaces are going to remain in this area here, and we just flip these two here. And if by chance, you know, this patio area is not going to be needed because of the tenant, then we can easily put those in this area over here. But at this point in time, just like every other, what I consider, commercial zone, they're always generally across from the fire lane in those areas, and that's what this is, which is very consistent with what is public practice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could make a, a few comments, and then I have one question.
Thank you, Anne.
Um, just a few items to just enter into the record. Um, since I've been in the employ of the town of Guilford, I just wanted to clarify, we have not had any applic- app, other applications that rise to the standards of requiring a special permit under Section eight point three. Um, so that's just one thing I want to point out. I can't speak to the history of this commission. Um, obviously, I arrived just as the new regulations arrived. Um, but if you desire us to do some research into the history of the regulation, you all were here, you know what you did at that time. Um, I could do some more historical research, or, and/or I could reach out to our attorney if you want a legal opinion on the excavation matter. Um.
And, and we could also reach out to Glenn. Who was our consultant?
True. You could, yes. You could reach out to any number of folks, but um, I would need some direction on that. Um, it is not this office's responsibility to make sure applications are complete when they come into the office. I just want to make that point. Um, and then the, the question I have um for Attorney Shansky, just to clarify, um, given your argument that um, this application does not need to comply with Section eight point three, are you withdrawing that special permit? Or are you keeping that in the cycle?
I'm not prepared to answer that right now, Marjorie Shansky.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll just, I'll just add, um, Attorney Shansky, I, I think at some point, um, given the current hurdles, whether you want to call them obstacles, or, you know, just the issues that stand before this application, um, I just, I want to suggest ever humbly that um, you and your applicant consider withdrawing and resubmitting if, because we've had the experience of um, multiple um, design changes. And um, the, the, the timing of the special permits and the site reviews have um, really made our job you know, pretty difficult. And we, we as a group, I think, generally, you know, don't like to decline applications. So if we can get something really, really clean for a project that I think generally we in the town conceptually approve of, I, 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 I think would be um, something that you and your applicant should take into consideration. That's my final comment.
Uh, may I address just a couple of handicap parking comments? Um, that, that, so, uh, you know, regarding the, the handicap parking by the retail, you know, I don't think it's good design to take all the handicap parking and put them behind. You know, you'll get complaint on that. It's almost like putting the handicap parking spaces in the back door when retail A, you know, is all the way around on the other side of the building. They're supposed to be near the building. And in retail spaces, um, uh, in, in retail um, facilities, they're, 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 they're always on the other side of the drive-by. You know, any Home Depot, any Stop and Shop, any whatever. But in regard to the handicap spaces for the apartment buildings, the analysis by the consultant is completely wrong. Um, so, you know, he, he highlighted, you know, uh, the right section of the code, you know, which is eleven oh six point three, which has four sections to it. He jumped right to three and said, this is what you do. And section number one says, an R two U's, which is an apartment building, you, you have to provide two percent of all the parking spaces provided for that facility have to be handicap spaces. I think that's what the law always was. So that's the first analysis. And that's what the code was. Um, you know, back in two thou-, you know, uh, you know, two thousand and twelve, you know, you know, and way beyond that. Uh, and then what they realized is, you know, we're, we're, you know, are we providing enough handicap spaces? So in the two thousand and eighteen code, they provided a, 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 a section in, in that piece that said you have to provide one handicap space for every type A unit. So, so in the two thousand and eighteen code, that went into law. What happened was that when people started designing, they realized they had an excessive amount of handicap spaces. So they all, you know, many, many people approached the state and said, you know, this seems excessive. So the language that they fell back on, in which case many, many mods were issued, uh, I applied for many myself, and, and everyone was granted, is that, is that you take uh, two percent of all the number of units in the complex. And, 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 and that's how many uh additional handicapped spa- parking spaces you provide. So there's, there, there's, there's two things you add together. You take two percent of all the parking spaces for the, for the complex or handicap, and then you take two percent of the units. And, 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 and you add that to the first one, that's the number of parking spaces you provide. And, 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 you know, it was suggested that while you either do two percent or you do one for every unit. That's not how you do it. And, and, you know, and, you know, I'm not saying, I, I, I'm, I'm just saying, based on experience, you know, I've permitted thousands of these units. I've been, we've, we've given, we've been granted COs on thousands of these units based on that formula. Two percent of all the parking spaces, and then two percent of all the units. You add those together, and that's how you do it. And there, it's, there's been some insinuations like, you know, it's not being done correctly or whatever, and, and nothing could be further from the case. It's, 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 it's a hundred percent accurate, and it's, it's, it's been done for years and years and years. And I'm happy to go to state and, 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 and discuss that issue.
Uh, Anne, I did have one question on the grading. Uh, as part of the inland wetlands review, have they been reviewing uh whether or not the grading, they're comfortable with the grading being that's presented currently? Um, being good enough to handle any soil erosion control issues towards wetlands? Uh, has that been part of the discussion?
I'm sure it has. I have not been privy to those um, discussions or those presentations because I'm not a member of that commission or a staff to that commission.
Okay.
Well, I'll ask, uh, let me ask, thank you, Scott. I'll ask another unfair question to Anne. Uh, Anne, a- as far as you know, has inland wetlands um been privy to, or has Mr. Gordon's report been shared with them?
No, we, we are separate commissions. We have um, we requested Mr. Gordon to be a peer reviewer for the Planning and Zoning Commission. His firm is working independent of this review with inland wetlands, but that's as much as I know.
Okay, thank you.
May I give you a little color commentary on that? Because I obviously have been at those meetings, as has Mr. Lancor, and perhaps Mr. Lancor can elucidate the conversations that have, that are um, relevant to Mr. Edmund's question. um, relevant to Mr. Edmund's question.
Thank you, Marjorie. Uh, to that question with regards to the grading, uh, Mr. Gordon has presented to the Wetlands Commission the potential for impacts if the eight point three section had to be applied. So that the commission is aware. But changes to the plans in terms of, you know, abiding by the, you know, the letter of the law of what considered the letter of law for eight point three have um, have been taken in respect and presented to the commission that we are following what we have submitted to them. Because again, both Marjorie and I and the team do not believe that, that section does not apply.
But Mark, could you direct your comments to the issue of whether the commission talks about erosion and under the-
On the erosion control, Mr. Gordon has already done an independent review and has acknowledged already that our erosion control plans are satisfactory. So.
Or during construction, but then also uh, the plantings that you're proposing for after construction. Uh, there hasn't been any, has there been anything from inland wetlands where they've been concerned with what your plan is showing?
No, not with regards, especially um, Mr. Logan, who is actually the consultant uh, for, on the environmental side for the peer review for the commission. Has actually been, uh, is encouraged by what we have provided in terms of both erosion control, he's made some minor suggestions, which we're happy to apply to. But we've heard nothing back that would suggest that we've got a problem. In fact, I've heard nothing but good things about what the plan is itself.
Okay, no, um, and, and you know, they have more deliberations to uh, conduct, so um, I think we are at the end of this discussion unless there are other comments by commissioners or.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Michaeler again. I, I, I just want to make sure that the commission, I've submitted a letter response to the uh, to the town engineers uh, questions. And I will say for the majority of those items in there, the only area that, again, that is a, is, is a we conflict with is with section eight point three, as she's made that noted in her comments. But all other elements that are she suggesting or whatever is uh, are, are what I call housekeeping items that we can comply with. So I just want to put that on the record because as with every project, and we know this, that you know, this is a sizable project. It's, it's got, it's got a lot going on. And as we've been moving the pendulum, you know, the ball down the road with your peer reviews, both from a wetlands and from a perspective here at P and Z, you know, they always constitute some revisions. And so we're in the process of, you know, getting, getting some other revisions done for wetlands. Uh, that really uh, are only going to be enhancements. And it's going to address basically the drainage, uh, some of the differences that we have. So that's all going to be done and we're going to have everything ready uh, by Friday to be submitted to the, to the peer review and to the town. And it's going to be up to the, up to, you know, Mr. Wee Way and Mr. Gordon to be, to basically just respond. And we've offered, we've offered to sit down with them individually in front of them and just go through this so that we're not going back and forth with writing a lot of letters. And then I think it's, and I, and I've had cooperation from Mr. Wee Way and with Jeff Rekorden. And I think if that cooperation continues, we can get through this.
Yeah, thank you. And I think that's the way to do this. I, I, you know, we, we've seen other applications where there's some back and forth and um, you, you know, would, uh, you know, parties that would otherwise consider themselves adversaries, you know, can cooperate and come up with something that is good for the um, the applicant and good for the town. So I, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Lancor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think um, we can close this part of the meeting, Anne?
Well, um, you're not going to vote on the item tonight and it's not a appearing item, so you don't have to close it. You could vote to continue this discussion to your next meeting.
Okay, um, I will entertain a motion to do so.
Um, should we direct uh, Anne to discuss uh, that specific section about grading with Chuck Andrews or with whoever else like she's proposed?
Um, I think that would make sense. Anne, you agree with that?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
Thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to ask a question that I tried to ask before, but I didn't realize I was muted. Uh, part of the excavation was coming very close to a property line. Um, and creating an unsafe situation. Uh, could you comment on that?
Uh, Mark Lancor for the record, uh, I'm going to bring up a uh, a slide, if that's okay. Because we've addressed it, that was specific that came from Robert Wee Way's comments at the last meeting. Uh, specifically thinking that, you know, if we were to uh, not have the over, if we had some overburden, we're going to have a problem with this one pinch point at the site. So I'm going to bring up a, 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 a shot here and I'll go through and show you exactly what, what is happening there. If you don't mind. Lot of drawings. I don't know why we've got so many drawings, but um, let's see. Oh, right here. So specific to that, um, in order to be able to develop to show that we're not going to be crossing a property line and that we were going to have a, a solution that didn't-
Mark, you're not showing any drawing.
Oh, you're not? Okay.
I'm sure you shared the screen.
I'm sorry, I'm going to see if I can pick it up. Where, oh. What happened was somebody turned my drawings off and now I gotta go get it. If you don't mind, I'm going to have to go get this.
I also mentioned you're not currently sharing your screen.
Yeah.
There you go, now you, now you-
No, that's mine, sorry.
Okay.
I was looking at the sharing options.
So can I, you, you're not, I'm not sharing, you, you can't see anything from me, right?
Correct, you are currently not sharing.
You should be able to, but you're not now.
Okay, I'm just, let me go here. Okay. Now we got it?
Coming.
I think so.
Yep.
It's loading, yeah.
Yes, it's a large, so I'm just going to go through and find this drawing. And then I will explain to you what's going on right here. So we developed a sheet C fourteen that's been submitted to the town. Was based on comments that came from Mr. Wee Way and uh, uh, and, and his concern was that if there was a certain amount of overburden, uh, that we wouldn't be able to meet the three to one slopes and that we'd be over the property line. So we went out uh, as of last week and we did some test pits along the, what I call the pinch point. This is really the neck that everybody's concerned about. And that pinch point, we found that there was thirty inches to bedrock in one location at the pinch point here. Thirty-eight inches to bedrock. And then it went to nine inches and then bedrock is right at the surface right here. So looking at this section, we developed a section, a model that showed meeting the twenty-five foot minimum back. Uh, one to six slope, bedrock cut slope, providing a three foot shoulder for drainage. And then a s- uh, uh, a, a, a small retaining wall would be placed at the top. Which in the regulations is completely permitted. Up to eight feet that can face the property and this is not facing the property to be at the grade. And then here's the property line, six and a half feet from the face of that wall. And then the fence would go around that, all the way around the six foot high safety fence. So that basically would address Mr. Wee Way's comments and how that would be satisfied.
There, is that answered your question?
Uh, yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Hi, Bill Freeman, I have a question for Anne. Um, is there a section in the regulations that does address mining or that type of excavation? Or was it the one that previously was mentioned by?
I can't talk to the, again, I can't talk to the history on this.
I'm just looking, is there another section in our regulations currently that addresses mining?
I'm going to do a quick word search, but I have not encountered it, but then I have had no requests about mining. So there seem to be two examples of the word mining in the regulations. One for uh, in special limitations in the CAM district. And then uh, it went from two to one. I don't know how that happened, but let me try again, hold on. Yeah, it is just one then. Um, no use of the word mining elsewhere. I haven't encountered it, but then again, it's not every day somebody would come in and talk to me about mining. So I can do a little more research on that as well.
I'm just curious if that, if that was the original intent of that before we, you know, rephrased it, but.
I'll do some research and get back to you.
It seems like it was used for that based on the history that I heard, but you know, with uh, arrow paving and what have you. All right, thank you. So do we need to then continue this uh, to the next meeting?
Yes, let's uh, entertain a motion to continue.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, did, did someone first uh, motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Aye.
Mr. Sands?
Yes.
Eman?
Yes.
And Mr. Mr. Evan?
Uh, I'm sorry, my internet cut out real quick while somebody was making the motion. Could you just tell me what, what we're voting on again, please?
We're continuing.
Voting to continue?
Yes.
Then I vote yes.
And I will vote aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Um, so the motion carries, um, I think.
We move on.
We move on.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just a couple uh, updates on enforcement issues. Um, we discussed two at our last meeting. We discussed um, the ongoing issues with forty-three Bay Street, which was Sean Portley's application. Um, he has managed to come in and provide drawings that are code compliant. So there was no need to um, follow up with fines on that application. We have signed off on the zoning permit and building has lifted the stop work order. Um, that does not mean that's the end of the story because a lot of people are very upset about this project. I will just leave it at that.
Okay.
Um, seventy-two Stepstone, um, we discussed the cease and desist on that. And Abby, who has been out on her honeymoon, is just back now. So she will start with those fines um, either tomorrow or Friday. And those will be daily fines.
And, and those were at the level of a hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Yep, yep.
Until they come into compliance.
Yep, thank you.
Um, we have a mandatory referral from um, the Board of Selectmen. However, we don't have any documents related to it. This is for um, the negotiated easement, um, pedestrian and, you know, coastal access easement for four oh five Whitfield Avenue. I asked um, the Selectmen's Office for the documents related to these easements. They don't have them yet. So I suggested that you probably wouldn't want to vote on it without being able to look at
No.
the actual easement. Um, and so I guess you're all shaking your head, so I guess that's confirmed. Um, so we're waiting for documents on that. I will defer that to the next meeting then. Um, we just received this afternoon notice of a lawsuit related to the decision last month on, let me bring it up. Um.
One of the signs we approved?
Nope, one seventy-seven Sam Hill Road, the approval of the fence in excess of six feet. The neighbor has, the neighbor has now sued the Planning and Zoning Commission and um, her neighbors again. This is her second lawsuit of her neighbors. Um, so I will be following up with Chuck on this lawsuit. Um, essentially um, the file is claiming that uh, the P and Z's actions in granting the applications were illegal, unlawful, arbitrary and in abuse of powers vested in the Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to the zoning regulations of the town of Guilford. Um, we will follow up on that lawsuit.
I have a question, I have a question on that because Phil mentioned something about when the lights had been changed. If they had gone, you know, little incandescent bulbs to the, you know, thousand million lumen LEDs. Do we, is that a thing that we're still going to follow up on or is it just between them?
I, I, so, uh, thank you, Bill. Um, so I was, I was not um, present to vote on that um, that issue.
Right.
But I, I, I think um, and, and Phil, even though he's not present, um, has brought it to my attention that he would like us to um, consider um, reviewing our lighting regulations and ma- you know, I, I, he didn't say this, but I, I think we could borrow from um, some of the sections of, of the commercial code. Um, because it, it, it just sounds like this neighbor um, i- is not behaving like a neighbor. And um,
Amen.
You know, it just, it just is, I mean, we, we've had things come before us before. And I, I remember a, a specific instance on, and Ted, you may have, you may remember this. It was, it was on Fair Street and, you know, two neighbors came before us, they were a little contentious. But we just asked them to go back and reconsider what one was asking for versus the other, and they came to an agreement and it was off our agenda. And that, that's the way it should work, but um, in this case, it, it just sounds like, it just sounds like there's a neighbor that is-
It's escalating.
She leads with her litigation. That's, that's her first move.
It, 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 it speaks loudly, yeah.
The point that Phil made is that those lights may have changed dramatically. Because the pictures I saw them the other meeting are pretty bright.
But I, but I think, um, you know, we, we may have to deal with the uh, litigation. But I, I think to, to um, um, mitigate any future issues like this, which might very well come before us in the, in the future, that we should look at the regulations um, with this specifically at mind. And I'll, I'll just mention while talking about this issue is that the other thing I want to look at, um, and I, I'd welcome the input of other, you know, members of this commission is to look at, I think is a, is a, a useful review of um, multifamily housing in Guilford. I mean, we've got zones that are joining each other. One zone allows for multifamily housing, one zone does not. Why is that? And, you know, with the, with the um, you know, and Larry, Larry can chime in about this. But I, the, with the emphasis we have now with a, a, a new, and it may be renamed from affordable housing to a housing commission, but um, uh, you know, there, there, there are, there are tweaks we can make that will make a difference in the amount of affordable housing in this town. And I think that we can look at our code with a careful eye and do things that will not upset our residents and will make a, make a, could be a minor difference, but it could be a difference. So I just wanted to bring that up too.
Yeah, well, um, there are two points I would make. First with the, the lighting thing, the pictures that she showed, there's a lot, a lot of glare. And if she followed commercial regulations, even though she's not required to, had she followed them- Had she followed them, there'd be much less glare and she'd have much better lighting, much better view of her property.
So they'd, they'd be shaded. The lighting would be, would be turned down, it would be.
Yeah, but it's more than, but it's more than that. When you have a lot of glare. You could go to the Dark Skies website and see examples. If you have a lot of glare, you can only see so far. But if you have the diffuser, so there's no glare. And you look into the distance, there's greater clarity. So if she's concerned about deer coming on her property or. Or fisher cats or whatever coming onto her property. She'd be better served with, with the dark sky lighting standard. As for the housing, there, there are a couple of things. There's a law in the books now. Passed last year that says if you zone to allow. Small units duplexes, triplexes, quadruplexes, up to, I think, five units, that. You can get a quarter point towards an eight thirty G moratorium. Regardless of whether they're affordable, eight thirty G affordable or market rate. But that was to promote this kind of housing. And there's further in the law that was just passed two days ago. Three days, signed by the governor yesterday, actually. I can send you all a summary. It's a, it's an incredible. Christmas tree bill. It's got a million housing issues and several of the sections would pertain to. Changes in zoning regulations, or I think we're very close to meeting the standard that they require. And certainly in terms of the plan of conservation and development, there's a lot to consider in this new legislation.
You, please feel free to send that out to us and let's. Anne, did you want to cover the? What updates do we have? I mean, there, there was a workshop that I was not, that was unable to attend. I, I don't think other commissioners were made aware of the workshop that took place. Was it two weeks ago, Anne?
It's all a blur, but yeah, let me, let me address a couple of issues here. Before we get, get there. So what I would propose to do is I can write a couple memos, one on the regu-. The lighting regulations and one on this multifamily housing question and kind of propose some tweaks to our. Regulations that might help mitigate those issues and I could present that, those memos at our next meeting. If we don't get bombarded with a ton of other drawing submissions.
I, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
One thing on the lighting is. At what point is it considered a nuisance similar to noise, which would mean that it would be a town board of selectmen issue and not a planning and zoning issue?
Well, you have a commercial lighting reg- regulation. So.
For approving and not approving applications.
Right.
I don't want to get to the point where neighbors are coming to us with a. A CEO, like trying to contact the CEO because they're, they don't like their neighbors' light.
That's where this started.
I know.
So what are you suggesting?
How do we, I, I'm just, when you're looking at this. How do you create regulations that are only pertaining to whether or not we approve an application and not. Rising to the level of us educating whether or not something's a nuisance? Because that's not our commission's responsibility.
Yeah, that. That's something that would fall to the CEO, but I will, I don't have an answer to your question, but I will look into it.
Yeah.
The other thing is with regulations that I tried to point out last week, but I was kind of cut off last time. Is that even if you adopt a new regulation, it's not going to affect things. Retroactively, so.
No.
Take for instance, this woman's lights and shining into her neighbor's yards that are pretty aggressive. Even if you pass. A zoning regulation change next week, you can't force her to comply with that because her lights are pre-existing. I'll also take a look, just to circle back, I'll also take a look at, at the state regulation updates. I just haven't had time to take a look at what. Was finally adopted, so those three things are on my list. For the plan of conservation and development. This is the schedule going forward. Today, we. Determined our next public workshop will, I'm still waiting for a complete confirmation, but I'm pretty confident in this. Next public workshop will be at the firehouse in North Guilford on. Saturday, June twenty-eighth at eleven AM. We will get out as much press and Facebook messaging and alerts as we possibly can. If you guys have ideas. For how to reach the public effectively, I would love to hear them. We did only have thirty people show up. Out of twenty-two thousand at our last workshop. And we've only had five. People respond to the public survey, so if you folks haven't taken the public survey, please do. There's a link via our planning and zoning webpage to the P O C D and its survey. But we need to get the word out on the street and we need more public participation.
Yeah, I, I'll just add, two of the people of the five are me and Anne.
Okay.
Please, and so, and let's just to be sure that. And I'll, I'll leave it to, to Robin, not to you, but please have Robin send a. A reminder to the entire commission about the North Guilford. P O C D workshop.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
And to, to your question, the Affordable Housing Commission runs public meetings on a regular basis. They have a large mailing list. They use the five thousand member mailing list of the library. And they get fifty to a hundred people attending the last two. I think Roger Joyce was at. One of them. And, and they have another one coming up on Tuesday, so. Their raison d'etre is community outreach.
Yeah.
And they've developed some. Capability there. And they would certainly want to get more and more involved with the P O C D.
That's a great idea. We have four workshops coming up for the commission itself. These are all public hearings. The first one will be next week on the eleventh, I believe. I believe Robin has sent you all agendas for that, but I will double check that. There's a lot been going on, so we may have missed sending you those. But it's a series of four. Series of four workshops to go over all the topics. Relevant to the P O C D, so it's also, it's to. Present preliminary information that has been gathered, but also to gather feedback from the commission. As to the, the specific direction of the P O C D, so these are, this is a series of very important workshops. I think that's, we will have two additional public workshops in the fall. To go over. Not. Draft, well, kind of. The beginnings of the drafts of the P O C D to kind of vet it with the public, so. These two in the spring and summer and then two in the fall. And then there are a series of tabling events that the P O C D folks will be doing as well.
Right, at, at various town events like. I think Anne, the Handcrafts Fair and the, and the Guilford Fair and, you know, some other, some other events around town. Where there'd be a lot of people around.
Right.
How did Earth Day go?
They said it, I wasn't there, I had other commitments, but they said they had good turnout, so. I'm, I'm really interested to see. You know, I will be talking to them tomorrow about the presentation they're doing for you next week at the special meeting. I'm interested to see the, the first beginnings of some of the, you know, the major ideas or themes that they're collecting.
Yeah, and I was meaning specifically the P O C D table at Earth Day. Had a lot of people come by?
Yes.
That'd be great.
I, I was there, Larry, and I talked to, was it Victoria on, on the team?
Yeah.
And she said it was steady. There was, there was someone conversing with her when I approached and I. Joined that conversation and, and it was, overall, I thought a very well attended event. The, the center of the green was. Full of tables, full of people, so it was, I, I think it was well received.
Besides that, we. Need to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
So has, I, I'm going to abstain, but has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from the May seventh meeting?
Yes.
I've reviewed those minutes with Robin.
Okay. Any comments you want to share with the commission, Ted, or just?
Well, I mean, it was a long meeting and it's, you know, twelve pages.
Ted, do you feel they are substantially complete, the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
How about I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Roger?
Uh, yes, yes.
Larry, were you, were you seated?
Yes, I was.
Okay. Okay. Ted?
Yes.
Bob, I don't think you were seated, were you?
I was not, nor was I present, so I'm going to abstain.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Scott, were you there?
Oh, yes, I was not there, but it does not matter.
Bill?
Yes, I vote to. So presented.
All right, I think that. That, I think that's a wrap, gentlemen.
How do you vote, John?
Well, I vote yes, I did review them.
Good.
So.
So I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Christie, Christie has her hand up. I didn't see that.
Yes, just on the, on the P O C D, our. You know, we're having our event at the library on Tuesday night, the tenth, from seven to eight thirty. And we're happy, if you can confirm your date by then, we can make that announcement. If you have. We will have handouts. If you have questions that you want us to put on the table as a handout. We're happy to do that too. Any way we can help you, we're, you know. You know, very happy to do that, so.
Thank you, thank you, Christie.
You're welcome.
All right, we're entertaining a motion to adjourn, so I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think it might be a majority vote.
Yes.
And vote.
Yes.
All in favor?
Anne, thanks for your preparation for this meeting and have a safe ride home.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks.